Everybody, welcome to tonight's work session. We'll go ahead and get started. Councilman Conyers is, he missed the flight, and so he's driving in from Atlanta. I think he'll be here by the time the regular city council meeting starts at 6:00 o'clock. So, first order of business is a presentation of findings of the Fairhope Public Library by Jim Walker, Vice President of Architecture with Goodwin Mills and K Wood. Jim, if we can have you up here, please?
Yes, sir. Right here.
You could sit at the table if you'd like, or stand up, whatever you're most comfortable. You can sit here at the table if you'd like.
Very good, thank you. Good afternoon, thank you all for having me. Obviously, we've been conducting some moisture-water mitigation testing and investigation at the public library, and then, so what we'd like to do today is just kind of present our findings, and then hopefully, maybe at the next council meeting, have an approval to move into the second phase of the project, which would be putting together plans and specification, construction documents to go out to bid. So, do I advance this, or?
Will that allow you to?
There we go.
Yeah, you're welcome, sure.
So, what you're seeing here is a roof plan of the library. This is as if you're above the building, looking down on it, and, let's see.
Do you have a microphone in front of you?
There is one. Am I not close enough? There we go. So, basically, the way we started this was mainly looking at the roof. That's where most of the water leaks were occurring, although there are some along the envelope of the building. What you're seeing in the light green area is the low north roof. To the bottom of the page is Fairhope Avenue. To the left is Bancroft, just to give you some orientation. And, so, on the lower roof, what you're seeing in that light green is an area approximately 5,500 square feet, and then you can, it's hard to see it, but there are some red wording, and then some blue wording. So, the red indicates where testing was done, and that's water testing that was under pressure to find out where the leaks were occurring. Now, working with the library staff, we kind of knew roughly where some areas were leaking, and testing was to prove exactly what was happening. So, we tested those areas, and then the blue is investigation. So, what happened after we tested it, found that indeed it was a source of water leaking into the building. We deconstructed that area of the building to find out what is the construction and what is the current condition of the construction. So, the light green areas is the lower roof. That area, we found several areas of roof leaks, both in parapets, walls, and there's a clear-story window, areas, several windows, those are all leaking as well. That light green basically says that that area of the roof needs to be removed and replaced. It needs to be a full replacement on that portion of the roof. The darker blue color is the flashing area, so we had edge flashing and gutters. Those were sources of leaks as well. And it's all, this is all in the full report, which the city has a copy of. So, part of that is removing flashings, replacing edge flashings, removing gutters, reinstalling the gutters and downspouts. And then, so, as you move up or down the page, the lighter gray color, that's the high roof area. That roof's in decent condition. There were some areas that we found where moisture was underneath the roof membrane. We feel like those areas can be cut out and replaced, and then that roof can be recoded. So, you're not in a full replacement mode there. We can recoat those areas. And, you can also see around the little children's octagon area, that low roof, and then near the Gideon's Room, that roof. Those roofs were both in decent condition. So, again, we feel like those areas can be recoded and not have to be replaced. Around the building, you'll also see that the light blue, and then the yellow, the yellow indicates parapets. There were some construction issues with the parapets. We feel like the metal coping needs to be removed, and the coping needs to be replaced along with some, you know, peel and stick that needs to be applied over those copings to make it weather tight. Any questions about the roof plan? Any?
On the light green, you mentioned some parapet walls, a clear-story window.
Right.
And there was maybe one or two other things, but I didn't, I don't think I heard you mention the, you know, the roof, roofing material itself. It seemed to me that what you described were leaks that were coming down all around the walls, and it may be getting below that roofing material.
Right.
And maybe it's compromised. Is that, did I read that right?
That's correct. It is, and the light green area is the roof. The teal color is the roof that we're recommending needs to be removed and replaced.
Was the roofing material itself, you know, on the acreage, was it?
It was in worse condition than the higher roof. So, we felt like, and I'll get to another slide here that'll help maybe explain that a little bit further, but in addition to the perimeters that need to be removed and replaced, you can kind of see as it goes around this low roof area, just with all the construction that's happening around it, the fact these clear-story windows need to be removed and replaced, and that wall needs to be rebuilt. The roof was in, the membrane itself was in poor enough condition, we felt it justified a replacement.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. All right, and so, here you can see, this is basically an image where we did some infrared scans, and what you see, the images to the right, the bright orange and red areas indicate moisture underneath the membrane, and it's a little bit hard to see from here, but from the left to the right, you've got areas 1, 2, 3, 4. That's, those are those images to the right, but we just wanted to show you where we, moisture has gotten underneath the roof, and the insulation is actually wet and compromised. That all needs to come out, so. But, you can see the rest of the roofs were relatively dry underneath the roof membrane. Okay, these are just elevation views of the building. The top image shows the north elevation, and this is where most of the work is being done. We've got, well, it won't project up there, but you can sort of see the clear-story windows at the top. What you need in the design of the roof is a minimum of 8 inches between the roof surface and the bottom of any kind of opening, so that you have enough room to flash properly to a window, for instance. We don't have that here. We maybe have 3 or 4 inches. So, the recommendation is to remove those windows, build up the exterior wall, so that you have enough room, and then reinstall a shorter window, or a window in height that's not quite as tall. So, you replace the window, you still have the clear-story window, but you have to kind of reconfigure that wall and rebuild that wall. And again, the bold color is the flashings, so that's kind of a reiteration of what you were seeing on the roof plan. The yellow are the parapet areas that need to be replaced, and then the yellow areas are the parapet, and then the green is the roof. Any questions about these elevations? Any questions? So, again, moving around the building, what we're looking at are the south and the west elevations. It's sort of more of the same sort of stuff. Just moving around the elevations, it's flashings, parapets, and some ephes foam. There's some foam shapes that are falling off the building. Those need to be repaired and replaced as well. The stucco and the brick were in fairly good condition. There are some areas that it needs to be cut out and replaced, just because, for instance, at the port of cachet, the metal flashing goes to the stucco, and the stucco goes beyond the metal flashing, which is not the right construction sequence. The flashing needs to be behind the stucco, so it'll flash out onto the roof. But again, it's minor sort of repairs, as far as that goes.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
You say it needs to be replaced, are you planning on replacing back with ephes?
Yeah, well, no, I'm not. On the ephes foam shapes?
Yeah.
No, sir. No, that, we would not recommend that. What we would recommend is removing a portion of the brick and go back with a rolock, because you'll have the same problem if you put it back with ephes. It's not a proper installation.
I'll bring it up.
That's pretty much it. We've done some estimates as far as a magnitude of cost. There are some things that you can sort of select from a menu. We want to do X, Y, and Z. Mainly what we've presented here today, in our opinion, needs to all be done under one scope. You know, we haven't gotten in too deep into the cost estimating, but think the cost will roughly be $450,000 to $500,000. And then you would add architecture and engineering fees on top of that. Some of those things include patching and repairing of the stucco itself. It's in good condition, but the age of the building, it needs some minor repairs. That would also include painting the stucco, as well as pressure washing the building. You know, it's just aged and needs to be cleaned, and so, certainly while you're doing this work, it makes sense to do that work as well, all in one scope.
Jim, are you going to recommend putting the last American back on all the stucco?
Yes, sir. Absolutely. After it's patched and whatnot, but that would be the coating we would suggest using.
Questions, council?
Questions, mayor?
Can we get a, you know, a list of your recommendations? If you could get it to the city clerk?
Yes, sir.
Get a list of all the recommendations in the menu to the clerk, so we can discuss it. I would maybe say, council, give your comments to Lisa, if you have an inclination. Of course, you know, once it's put out, if you put all the specs out for bid, we'll have another chance.
Absolutely.
It's not a, not acceptance of any expenditure.
And just as part of that process, before we put anything out to bid, we give you the cost estimates of where we feel like this thing will land. So, even before we open bids, we kind of have some sort of idea. You know, until we kind of get into the design, it's a little bit harder to sort of put those cost estimates together, but just rough magnitude, we feel fairly confident that it'll land somewhere in that range.
Okay. What kind of timeframe do you think it'd take to get construction documents?
About 6 weeks. Feel like we could get it ready to bid at that time, or to the city for review, perhaps, within that timeframe.
I know we talked about in one of our initial meetings in the beginning of the year about looking to phase this, but you think under one job is the best way to go?
That's the way I would do it, yeah. You know, a lot of this work, it just, once you're out there mobilized, you know, it just makes sense to do it all at once. You know, there are some window issues that we found, so some of those need to be repaired, but some of it, these are storefront windows, so they're put together out in the field. It's kind of a kit of parts. We noticed in some of the windows that we deconstructed, they're not actually put together as they should be. Some gaskets are backwards, and just some construction-related issues. Now, that sort of suggests if you see it in one window, it may be occurring in others. Those windows may not be subject to as much wind-driven rain. There could be other circumstances. They could be under canopies. That's why they're not leaking. But at some point, you know, it's still air infiltration coming into the building. So, it's one of those things, repair the ones that are leaking now that you've got a problem with, but know at some point in time, you may want to do a window replacement or repair on those windows as well.
Any questions, council?
Yep.
And I see a lot of people here with the library, and appreciate you being here. I know there's a lot of concern for that, and I appreciate it.
Yes, sir.
It's like you did a thorough job.
Well, thank you very much.
Okay.
Let me know if you have any questions, and I'll follow up with the city clerk.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, next item will be a discussion of a zoning district for our schools, the possibility of amending our zoning ordinance. Planning Director, Mr. Wayne Dias.
Thank you very much. I've got a couple handouts here, just the proposal we've drafted. In what we've been titled, this is the civic and institutional district. It would include schools and other nonprofits, and also some of the public facilities, public buildings. Just trying to get a handle on these, where they're located, and put them in a classification by themselves. On the first page, it just has a title to it. This is the amendment, how it would look in the ordinance. If you look on page 3, following the format of the ordinance, the addition is an underline, civic and institutional district. This district is intended to provide space at appropriate locations for public-owned property, property owned by quasi-public or public services entities, and property used or planned to be used for certain institutional facilities. And so, that's kind of the purpose of this. And if you look at the fifth page, I believe, it's the use table, where we've gone through an amendment. You really can't see it very well, but we've stricken a lot of these uses. You can see, it's so small, you can't see where we've stricken it. But basically, what we've done is, we've created this district, and we moved as a permitted use, schools and libraries and places of worship, things of that nature, primarily into a civic and institutional district. Right now, they're kind of scattered throughout the ordinance. You can have them just about anywhere, and we felt like it was appropriate to sort of maybe define it a little better for these. And so, that's the proposal we have drafted. Also, on the last page, we have defined, since we use the term "public use" and "quasi-public use" in the proposal, we have defined those to be included in the definition section of the ordinance. So, that's kind of the proposal. Again, the main purpose of this is just trying to get a better handle on the locations and get, looking at apples to apples when we're looking at districts and zoning and things of that nature, so. I don't see a drastic change. This will be the first step in the process. If this were to be approved, we would then follow up with a rezoning, and we would identify all the property that would meet this description that's intended to be covered by this, and we would then bring a rezoning application for various properties forward, and go through that process to formally amend the zoning map. This would just allow this district, second process again, would be to amend the zoning map.
Did you pattern this after particular ordinances? You researched this?
I did research municipalities like Fairhope, similar sizes. It's not uncommon to have an institutional district. It just varies from place to place how they want to handle these issues. But we did, is we, after we determined kind of how other people did do this, that's when we created our own, and then looking at our own unique ordinance, and tried to fit that into that format that we have.
Can we tailor those uses if we decide to change them?
Yes, sir, sure can.
And we tweak those?
Yes, sir.
I see a couple of suspect ones in there. Questions, council? Questions, mayor?
Now, council president, we do have this scheduled for the September Planning Commission meeting, so if you have comments, I'd love to hear those, and we can go back and make these necessary changes before it moves forward. But again, I think the whole intent was just trying to get a handle on those districts.
All right, I'll just tell you off the top of my head. I mean, and you could discuss it with me now or at a later time. One that jumped out at me was cemetery, for instance.
Right.
That might be a public use, but it may not be one that I was thinking of
Right.
For some of these properties. You know, I even would question hospital, and even a place of worship.
Right. What's interesting about the place of worship is, they're not allowed by right in any district.
Oh, so we would have to put?
Yeah, right now, as we, as we sit today.
Wow.
They're not allowed? Not allowed by right. They're allowed on appeal, which is unusual. But if you look at the current arrangement and the current ordinance, they are allowed on appeal only, so it seems kind of...
They allowed on appeal only in certain zoning districts, or any zoning district?
Well, if you look at the table, councilman, and you'll see where to go to. If you look at place of worship, it's allowed on appeal in the R3, R4, R5, B1, B2, B3A, B4, M1, M2, and then the NVC and CVC districts.
I'm not seeing that.
It's, if you look at civic, the second, if you look at the use table, and you look at the civic, the second category civic, and you look down at place of worship, and you'll see the...
I only see it all the way out to the right.
I'm sorry. That was cemetery, I'm sorry, that was cemeteries. That's right.
I saw it as cemetery, not on...
That's right. I'm sorry, I got, oh, my glasses on, that's cemetery. So, it's not allowed by right in any of those.
Have you ever turned down a church, Wayne?
In my time, I have, well, in my career, we've dealt with churches, and my recommendation is that we change that as well, to allow those by right. Because I've been there before, councilman, I know what you're talking about, so. And we can certainly make that change, too, if that's the will of the council, we can make that change.
I would take out cemetery if it was me, and I would certainly question hospital.
We can certainly do that. It's not a big change at all, we can certainly do that.
And if the place of worship is on appeal to any of these, I don't know if it's necessary or not. Just my thoughts, so. Anybody else have any?
The place of worship, I know, you know, for the typical church, it's not that big. I think, well, a lot of times, I know years ago with the large mega-churches, they were causing a lot of concern because they had, I mean, daily activities and those kind of things, and it's, that's where I'm guessing that change occurred, where they kind of removed it from uses that were permitted by right.
Guess I had it just in my mind, it's, you know, what we're talking about, where, you know, more school properties, and
Right.
You know, if you were to take them, we have, you know, 3 unused school locations. The old intermediate school, on Fairhope Avenue, the Anity Jean School, and I say "we" in our area, we in our area, we don't own them. And then also the K1 Center, and, you know, if you get a mega-church that wants to come in there and use it for that, I don't know. I think it might, I think those locations would be met with resistance
Right.
By our citizens.
We can certainly go back and retool this just for schools, if you'd like. That's something that we can do. I think our thoughts going into this was be a little more inclusive, and trying to include maybe more than one use in those, but we can certainly do that. If that's, wish the council to be a little more precise with that, we can certainly do that.
Well, those first, you know, the first 3, you've got elementary, secondary education facility, which is kind of a catch-all there. Library certainly, I think, fits into education, but it's not necessarily a school of sorts.
Sure.
You know, public open space, you might have a public open space that goes with the one of those
Sure.
Centers of education. Then community center or club, I'm not sure about that word, club, possible. And then public utility. You might have a need to have public utility on one of those properties.
Sure.
For instance, we had talked about a solar farm
Mm-hmm.
Near a school. You'd probably have to have that in there for that purpose.
Right, right. We can go back and make some adjustments, if you like. With the place of worship, we can hold that off to another time, or we can do a separate amendment, if you like. That's something we may want to look at a little further, do a little further investigation into. I know that is, can complicate this amendment we're proposing.
Well, if you can do that on appeal, you could do it on appeal to that zoning district.
Mm-hmm.
So, it wouldn't necessarily have to be in there.
Right.
It would always allow the flexibility to be put in a district such as that.
Sure, sure.
Anybody else have any?
Well, actually, what you're saying is put it subject to, you know, put the...
It automatically is by our current ordinance.
No, sir.
None of this?
Yeah, I'm sorry. When I read it a minute ago, I was reading from the cemetery.
Only subject to these 3?
Right. If it's blank, that means it's not permitted.
Okay. VRM, NVC, and CVC? Permitted with approval, especially...
That's right.
permitted subject to, so VRM is the only one right now?
By right, yes, sir.
What is VRM?
Village mixed use, basically.
So, where will we see a map of where these districts are established?
If we do establish this educational district, institutional district, we would then have to identify the locations where they are now, and we could create a map of that, but also we have to have those actually rezoned, go through the rezoning process. And so, with that, we'd have an accompanying map for that rezoning process. This would just establish the district. The next process would be to identify the locations of those, and bring those forward.
And we can retroactively do that?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Anybody else have an opinion, a strong opinion about any particular specifics that are being listed for uses?
No, but I reserve the right to have an opinion at a later time, as I learn more.
If you have more, if you have questions, you can call me or email me, and we can talk about that, too, offline.
All right.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you, Wayne. Appreciate it, Wayne. Okay, Quail Creek Clubhouse discussion. Ms. Major, is that you? Do we have the architect here?
Yes.
Engineer? Architects, engineers?
You don't want to do this? Come on. Let's go, guys.
You've got plenty of microphones.
Robert, you're in on this, too?
On what?
On this Quail Creek.
What are you talking about?
Discussion. Discussion.
Is it possible to hook up to? Get down on the screens?
Yeah, we need Jeff. Hello, Jeff? Jeff, can you come in here, please?
I'd like to see that, not that, but over here. Make it a circle.
Okay.
Yeah. You see? We go ahead and circle. Or even here.
All right, we have with us some cost estimates run that pursuant to the changes that we made last time, and...
He wants to be able to show this on the screen.
Here's the PDF. We got a PDF file on there. You got it under Director Quail Creek. Okay, what we've done is, last time when we were there, we took out
I did.
All of the windows, the storm-resistant windows are all out. We've left in caulking and flashing around the existing...
Might be getting a little closer to your microphone, David.
Okay, there we go. You hear me all right? Does that work? Is that better? Okay. So, we've left all of the existing windows, and we're providing flashing and sealant around all of the existing windows, and then we will put a vapor barrier around the existing substructure, and then over that, we will then put the new hardy plank lap siding all around the whole building, the entire building. And then, per request there, we've also added on a canopy structure now that comes out 10 feet back from the existing, where your deck overhang was, we're coming out 10 feet further, and now we're going to have a concrete, okay, here we go. Yeah. So, anyway. What else? Demolition.
Are you on the demo? You're talking about the demo?
No, come to the next sheet, next sheet over. Let's go to floor plan there. That's just the demolition plan. There we go. And, so, the floor plan, as you see, is, we've now extended it out. We have the deck that we're proposing out the back. We've done some, a lot of research on this deck, and we looked quite a bit... on this deck, and, um, we looked quite a bit at the Trex material, but our concern was about wear and tear on the Trex finish itself, and once the finish is gone, you won't be happy with what's left. Uh, so our concern was the longevity of it. We found another product out there that we think is going to be much, much better for this application, and it's called IPE. It's pronounced E-Pay, and it's from South America. It's called Ironwood, which basically is, um, has a 75-year lifespan expectancy with it. Uh, it is very scratch resistant. In fact, if you try to take an axe to that stuff, you'll be all day trying to get through that one. Uh, it's a very, very, very dense wood, uh, and it works very well in these kind of applications, very highly suggested by people that we've researched and found out this material actually is, is better than the cementitious products. Uh, so, anyway, we would propose that. Cost is actually cheaper even than where we were ending up with Trex. Uh, it looks like it's coming in right, and this is using a five-quarters, which is, for them, is a very heavy, um, product. And they said that you could probably do it with less thickness, but we would want to stay with probably a five-quarter thickness, uh, instead of going to the, um, three-quarter that they would have otherwise. Uh, and it would give you, um, no, almost virtually no deflection on it at a two-foot, even a two-foot span. So it would allow us to probably lessen some of the support beneath the structure. We're going to be able to use, um, go ahead and go to the DD 500, the sections there. Yeah, there's elevation, next one over. Okay, there we go. And, um, so, we'll be able to use the, um, pressure-treated substructure beneath it as just pressure-treated wood. Uh, we'll put one layer of ice and water shield over the top of the, of each of the two-by, so that when we drill through it, we're going to use concealed fasteners where you will not see it. They use a grooved side, and it has a plastic-coated metal slot, uh, insert that goes into the groove, and then you screw it down and you put the next one in there. Uh, so it's concealed fastener all the way through, and it screws through the ice and water shield, therefore you'd get no moisture into the top of your two-by-eights or two-by-whatever we end up with on structural framing. So it would be very, um, effective in keeping us from getting into further deterioration of any structure down the road. Um, so, anyway, that's our, uh, we did leave the Trex railing is what we did use. We found that to be probably more cost-effective there. Uh, although there's an alternate on the table right now that we're looking at, uh, where this IPE group can still furnish the rails on the top, and they could use a cable, um, in between it, uh, as a stainless steel cable, which opens it up, makes it real nice and modern-looking and very, very nice. So that's one alternate we could look at as opposed to, um, using the Trex railing. Trex is just a little bit more traditional-looking, depending on the look you want, but, um, and so, um, that's, um, virtually where we ended up with, and the cost did come down substantially to, um, I think without the, um, and everything figured in as best we can come up with. Um, we're at a subtotal of 157, to which we would add, uh, an O-H and P at 23%, which would cover the contractor's overhead and profit. And that puts you, and we even put in a contingency, a 10% contingency, and that puts it at 209,000, uh, total with the contingency included. So, anyway, uh, does that, um, make sense? We've got, uh, we've got these, we're supposed to be, uh, no, we'll have these printed out and given to you here. Um, supposed to have them in the nibs, and we had them mixed up here, didn't, didn't show up right. Um, anyway, um, any questions here that we can address in terms of...
Can you go back to the plan view, please? Yeah. So if you're out on the, the current deck, if you'll put your mouse on that where the current deck is, and... Right there. And so that extension that's just beyond that, that right there, is that concrete?
Yes.
Is that what we, we had talked about we could expand into in the future if we need to?
That's correct.
So that's designed to be...
That is concrete, yes, that is correct.
Enclosed in the future if needed be for the dining room or not?
Yes.
That is where the wooden deck is right now?
Yeah, and the wooden deck is showing up on the demolition plan coming out.
Okay. And then I guess, just my, my last issue, more of a comment, was that the, um, called it, um, E-Pay?
Yes.
The E-Pay is, is almost like a, almost like you're installing a hardwood floor, a tongue and groove, hardwood floor.
It is, very hard.
And I know you say it's supposed to last, how long, 70 years?
75 years is what it says.
With water sitting on it? I mean, because there's, is there, is it going to be sloped like a, I mean, is water going to pool on it?
It's not, it's not tongue and groove, it's got a gap, the little, the concealed fastener provides a gap in it, so it looks like a transitional deckboard, but the fastener's in the, in the clip.
That's correct.
So they're facing in between the deckboards?
Yes, it doesn't, uh, you won't have any drainage situations. It does drain. And, um, as far as the finishes, they say termites don't like that kind of stuff, it's a little too tough for those guys. And, uh, it's, um, as far as the, um, actual finish, and the wood itself comes with, it's almost like a mahogany, but it's dense, very, very dense, and, um, it's very, very scratch resistant.
Has it got a nice wood appearance, though?
Yes, you can get all kinds of finishes on it, or, you know, there's all kinds of things.
Leave it natural, it grays out.
Yeah, you can just...
Don't worry about it, no maintenance.
Leave it natural if you want to.
Will burn.
That's correct.
Has this been used in other golf clubs? Because we've got golf shoes.
Yes, and golf shoes, we were looking at that, that was one of the reasons why we went to that, because we are, um, with Trex, the problem with it is, once the finish, if golf shoes are used, it will damage the finish on it over time. Granted, now they're going to more of a soft cleat, uh, most of the golfers nowadays use soft cleats, but, yeah. Uh, and yet, and that's the reason why we were going to that, was the finish itself of the Trex would probably, and we talked to the Trex reps, and they said the same thing, they were a little concerned about golf cleats, too. And if somebody does use metal on it, there's a good chance it could mar that pretty well.
Even, even though this does drain and it's a flat surface, this E-Pay has a slip coefficient to it, and like I said, you can't hurt it, so next step would be concrete.
Yeah, and in fact, you can't even get a 75-year life expectancy out of galvanized steel, so...
No, I, I am personally familiar with Ironwood. I was just concerned about how slick a finish it is.
Yeah.
In this case.
It meets a slip coefficient, needed to.
You know, .6 is what we need for, you know, to, to work ADA.
Uh, we didn't mention it, but I see an ADA compliant ramp on my side.
That's correct, and that's now concrete, yes, sir. Um, that's now a concrete ramp, instead of, um, at one point we were looking at doing that out of, um, either Trex or this product here, but, um, that is now a concrete ramp, and it has rails both sides and ADA compliant.
Jack, that was another reason we extended the covered deck area, the concrete that you talked about, you know, for future expansion, but by taking that concrete further out, there's a couple of issues with the existing concrete. It's, uh, broken at the edge, safety issue, and also we have the ADA issue getting in those doors by, so, taking the covered area out further, pouring a new slab, we're capping the existing slab over the existing concrete to bring it up to where those doors meet ADA, and then the ramp ties into that.
So that brings me to the question, uh, the doors that lead into the dining room will be ADA?
Yes.
Or is that the, the main entry point?
Right. Now, notice that one door down there on, where we have that recess over to the left right there, yeah, right there, that one right there, we're going to have to reverse that door swing for it to comply with ADA. Um, I was out there today looking at it, and that door swing's actually in the wrong direction. Uh, so we'll have to reverse that door swing, um, for it to comply.
Would you need that access there to be ADA compliant?
Yes, actually you do, to get, um, you have to have 60% of your exterior exits have to be ADA compliant, so that one is required, yes. Uh, so...
And this door, we are removing, totally removing.
Yeah, that one's going away.
Oh, the middle door?
Yeah.
Not the, no, the one that goes into the current go-nowhere foyer?
Exactly.
Yeah, that one is being removed.
I was going to call it the same thing.
Okay, yeah, that one is coming out now.
ADA ramp, the current one, will be removed, and you can see on the required, that there'll be a, a walkway, a sidewalk that'll connect that area over to the, the other door.
And that one has such a slight slope to it that it will not require handrails. Once you get less than a 120, you don't have to have handrails.
And what about the main entrance there, or the drive-through, will that be ADA, is that ADA compliant?
Yes, it is, and it already is, yes. So, you're pretty good there.
And the wall comes down on the inside? Yep, there's the wall coming down.
Yeah, also inside, the one door, the, the one wall that goes, that's in the nowhere area?
Yes.
That left door?
Oh, yeah, yeah, it opens it up wide there, right. Just, just as you walk in that door, that's to nowhere, immediate wall on the left there.
It's not a supporting.
And it'll be to the right, it'll be a, a, uh, can you get into the pro shop? Will you be able to get in the pro shop with a wheelchair?
Yes, yes, you will.
Okay. And that'll be, you'll be able to lock that, though?
Yes.
If you've got the dining hall open, but the pro shop locked up.
Right.
So it's not going to be opened up all the way?
Not all the way through.
Okay.
Pro shop needs to be locked off when it's closed and the rest of the building is open for events.
But if it is open, one person could still run the whole thing? Okay.
Okay.
Questions, council?
Yeah, demolition of the efus, is that all of it?
Yes.
The 2250?
Yes, all of the demolition of efus, yes, sir. Okay, and then, uh...
You thinking about sending an author out there?
No, I was thinking about, I don't want any efus on that building.
The only part that, um, we see that was kind of in question is below slab level around there. There's, there's, looks like it may be an efus product, but it's up against concrete. Um, in other words, below slab level over in the pro shop area, um, take the mouse over there on the, you know, that other side, yeah, that side right there. Um, what you have below slab level is what looks like an efus product below that, rather than putting the hardy plank against the concrete, we were intent on, you got mostly vegetation there anyway, it's all plants and, you don't even see it hardly, because it's behind all kinds of shovels. Um, well, it's, it's up against concrete, though, but I mean, it's, so in other words, as far as it...
Is it on the ground?
We can remove it if you prefer it, yeah, we can remove that, but we were thinking more of like a elastomeric paint and just go ahead and leave whatever that is in place. Uh, but we can remove that, uh, if you prefer.
There's no damage to it now, currently?
Yeah, there's, we don't, there's no moisture damage or anything of that nature with it, um, because it had a substrate behind it that was concrete anyway. So, but if you want us to remove it, we can. We can put the hardy board already all down there, too, if that's what you prefer.
I'll have to look at it.
Okay.
It's not hurt by now. It's not worn.
That was the only part we had in question, was that part right there. And on the front, um, uh, the very front elevation, uh, I guess go back one second, yeah, right there to the elevations. Uh, on the front, right up there, we have the little oval-shaped window that you had requested, and we're going to be, it'll be a 24 by 36 oval, um, elongated oval with the quail in it that, um, we discussed.
We're looking for an artist. Anybody knows an artist who can design the window for us? Yeah, I can't, can't imagine that, that would be hard to scrape off.
Yeah, and so, anyway, it'll be, um, we're going to have just a, um, probably some sort of a, um, decorative oval window in that area. And that front area right there, rather than trying to put hardy board on that, I'd prefer to put shingles, the hardy shingles instead, because they're, they're...
That's what you, that's what you've got, put it as an estimate.
Right, and it's in the estimate. Um, it's easier to work with when you're dealing with that kind of a shape, rather than trying to cut around on the hardy boards, it's kind of complicated. So the shingles would work a whole lot easier and a lot better price-wise. And it would give you a good finish with it.
Ms. Smith, do we have any, did we put anything in the current budget for this?
The 18 budget or the 17?
For the 17 budget.
I think it was 175, maybe?
175 in the current budget?
Yeah.
Well, the reason I ask was, I, I thought that we had put something in, and I, I actually didn't realize we, we didn't put that much, so that's good. Uh, I think that, I don't know, I would make a recommendation to council to go ahead and get these specs put together and put out for bid.
Sorry, it was 725, 225.
Oh, I changed everything, I take that back. I would make the recommendation that we get the, get the specs out for bid, if I could get the council to, in principle, agree to that, to ask the mayor to go ahead and get the bid specs out.
Yep.
Would anybody have a problem with that? Mayor, if you, uh, would get those, uh, put that out, get the bids packaged together?
I know that, uh, right now with Dan Alde, Deborah said that you were going to handle those things, but we might have to talk about...
Well, I believe that's what's, uh, that's what's included also in the, uh, cost of 36,000 would be for, uh, an engineering firm to put that.
That's correct.
That is correct.
It's in our contract.
Mayor, would, um, it's already included, or would the mayor need to select, uh, you or, I don't want to put it on...
It's already included.
You want someone else to do that?
It's in our contract, yes.
Yes, we would include that.
And I would ask the mayor to ask you to move along with it. I think, I think this is exactly what we were looking for. I mean, from, for the scope, for, for me personally, this is what I expect to see. And it's, it's easy to always exceed the scope of what we envision, but I, I want to commend you for staying within the boundaries of what we asked you to do, and, and not growing this thing into some massive project that, um, we probably don't want to, to, you know...
The thing that really helped us was taking all those storm windows, uh, storm resistant windows out, those things were, you have to meet the local wind loads, that's, that's a heavy, heavy requirement for budget. Uh, so that helped us a whole lot right there.
As our resident building experts, do you agree?
Yeah.
Robert?
Move forward.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you for the opportunity.
All right. Mo Sarge, Mr. Linder? Discussion of section 7 dash 123 of the Fairhope Code of Ordinances.
I want to, uh, first state, and I thank you for the opportunity to come up here. Uh, we have, uh, been looking at our landfill, and of course, everybody knows that, uh, the lifespan of a landfill's just depends on how much stuff you, you bring in. And we have noticed over the last five years that more stuff's coming in, and we have got ordinances on the books that we really have not, uh, enforced. And I want, I want you to look at the second page of section, uh, dash, uh, section 7 dash 123 and section 7 dash 124. If we continue to do, taking into the, the, the volume of debris that we're bringing in is, is, uh, 31,804 cubic yards per year taken into the landfill. That's all the paperwork that we turn in, we turn into the state. Of course, that turns into a yearly tonnage of, uh, 7,744 tons. That's just C and D debris, that's construction and demolition debris. This year, we've repurned, repermitted, permitted our, um, landfill for another five-year period. Uh, we're having issues with the fact that, that people are bringing in contractor debris. And we have, since April, been passing out these, uh, ordinances, letting all of our citizens know, because we want to inform them, you know, that, that there's ordinances on the books... know, because we want to inform them, you know, that there's ordinances on the books that we're trying to curb this thing that we've been going through. So, we want to come to you and just kind of an informative way of letting you know that we want to start enforcing these things and try to save our landfill, especially for the, a lot of citizens of Fairhope, because this is a jewel right here. If we had to bring this to the, we had to bring all this tonnage to Magnolia at the current rate of the current ton, 7,744 tons, that would cost us roughly 240,000, $240,064 a year tipping fees. That is a huge amount. So, what we're trying to come across and say that, we want to let you know that we want to try to start enforcing these ordinances, and we don't want people to call you and want to know why. So, we want to kind of inform you.
We already started kind of enforcing it.
Yes, ma'am. That's correct.
And they're calling me. So, we're just making it more awareness.
Yes, ma'am.
That we're just enforcing what has always been on the books.
Yeah, I got to tell you, Arthur, just to be honest with you, this has been my fifth year on the council, and I didn't know that we, there were ordinances that we're not enforcing. Are there any other ordinance that we're not enforcing that we need to be aware of?
No, I got to tell you that one.
Because if there are, maybe we need to know about those. I just, you know, we've already gotten to the point where it's critical, and we spent money on tipping fees for, what I'm hearing is hundreds of thousands of tons of debris.
No, that's garbage. That's garbage. I'm sorry. Let me clear myself up. That's an estimated, if we had to bring that tonnage to the landfill, then that's what it costs us. Right now, it's not costing us anything.
Just using our, well, the cost base, which is...
Yeah. Well, basically, the situation is that we're re-permitting the landfill this year. So, it's a five-year permit. Every five years, we have to re-permit. We started looking at the height exemption that was acquired in the previous five-year period and looking at the fill rate to where we are today and where we expect to be in the next five years. So, at the current fill rate, we've got between eight and 13 years left before we have to actually shut the landfill down and not accept this type of debris. So, if we look to utilize these ordinances as a tool to try and restrict the heavy-duty levels that are coming in now, we could probably extend it anywhere from 20 to maybe 23 to 25 years at the current rate. And still, basically, we're permitted for residential drop-off only, and what we're getting is a lot of contractor debris. So, that's kind of the intent there, is that what can we do to try and eliminate this heavy contractor debris, but still allow the residents to bring in that couch, or that water heater, or that doghouse and drop it off? And that's what we're looking to do with these ordinances.
Well, I commend your courage to bring this to the council and admit that, because it really, I don't like any ordinance not being enforced. Don't throw anybody in jail for somebody feeding the ducks up cheap, but just want to...
Well, there's one reason why we didn't want the mayor getting phone calls, and we don't want y'all getting phone calls.
We want her to get them off.
That's what I meant.
No, we don't want her to get any, we don't want y'all to get any.
It's already been on the books.
Yeah, yeah. So, we want to do the right thing for Fairhope, and we want to extend it out for all the citizens.
I would tell them that they're fortunate that they got away with it for as long as they did, right?
Yeah.
That's it.
I appreciate y'all keeping the added contractors out.
Has Robert Brown been out there dumping anything?
I'm still trying to figure out what a kind of, we got to kind of enforce it. Every time I show up, it's usually enforced.
Arthur, how do you tell the difference between a contractor and a, like a homeowner that's just repairing some deck boards or something?
Well, if you have a double-oxal trailer that pulls up behind a F-250 Ford truck, and he's got...
Turn him away.
Yeah. That's our problem.
First one you do will be a borrowed truck where the guy just deconstructed his deck.
It's kind of interesting when you set at the gate and you hear all the people come in, and you have to go through everything, you have to sort through it. And it gets to be a challenge at times.
And where are we on contractors, landscape contractors that dump their yard debris on the side of the road? They're not supposed to do that either, are they?
When we catch them, we enforce it and make them come out and pick it up. Now, we have a lot of guys that cut grass, you know, a couple scoops of grass, really ain't going to hurt a lot, but you're talking mounds of stuff, that's when we have problems.
Are they supposed to do that?
No, sir.
These ordinances apply to the same landscape debris as construction debris.
That's the kind of.
They do.
I would say to every employee in this room is that we should always be enforcing our ordinances all the time. And at least, you know, and I understand that there's times you issue warnings and whatnot, but you'd be expected to be followed, and we want to be civil, but I think that we should always, at least, at a very minimum, tell the people that we expect them to follow our ordinances.
And it's just, you know, it's a challenge to deal with the landfill. Everybody thinks it's easy, but we have two ladies there that come in, and, you know, they have, people has to be truthful, and we don't always have people that's truthful.
What do we do, you know, I've heard it come up recently, the last, you know, year, maybe, or so, and rightfully so, when people come to the desk and show a driver's license, and I've, you know, heard the people say, well, how many stickers do you want? What if they say they want four? Two for them and two for their neighbors? I mean, do we really check that address and see if they're city residents, or do we make them show, you know, a tag receipt for their vehicles in their name?
What we're going to do is tie MUNIS into, MUNIS can establish, it has the parcel, and it tells you if you're inside or outside the city limits. I'm trying to see if MUNIS can do it off of the driver's license, because when you scan the driver's license, it's up to date. In MUNIS, it'll show you the parcel. That'll work at the rec center, the golf club, anywhere you want to go, and then you can identify people who live inside the city limits.
I don't want to tell you how many vehicles they have, and I hate to throw this person on the bus on who they were, but I was paying my bill the other day, and they came up, showed a license. Clerk said, how many do you need? They said four. I'm sorry, no, they said two, but they could have said four. And then, and maybe they have four, or maybe they have one vehicle. I don't know.
This is just a better way, I think, of identifying it.
Sure. I mean, we need to, as long as the process is getting better, because that, I see that issue is maybe not as big as the commercial dumping, but it can be abused. And we want people to benefit by living in the city, and we need to enforce it.
Well, we're trying to do a good job.
I know you are.
And we want to keep it up. Give you all an update. We changed our recycling route this past week, and we've gotten a lot of phone calls. We communicated through the website, we communicated in the radio, we communicated, and now we have guys passing out flyers. Lastly, last week, we got a lot of data with phone calls, but this week, we've gotten better.
Mine sat out there all day Friday. I was wondering when you were going to pick it up, and I realized, oh, wait a minute, that map changed. I missed it.
This week is a fresh start on the new schedule.
Yes, ma'am. It is a fresh start, and I agree with you.
It's going quite well this week. It was rough last week. This week's a lot better.
Yeah.
But we're getting better, and we're moving forward to trying to cut down on overtime, trying to cut down on the guys being on the route so long. It's just...
And that saved how much?
Man?
Twenty percent?
Yeah.
Twenty percent savings in time, and they're all back by lunch.
Yes.
It's working really well so far.
Yeah. And then, once we get the new trucks that y'all approve, it's just, it's going to be, we should have those by December.
Well, we haven't approved it yet, now.
No, that's the, that's a different one truck.
Oh, different?
Yeah, different truck. But anyway, I appreciate y'all's time. I thank y'all, mayor, thank you, and I thank the council for all that y'all do and what y'all support us in public work, so. Thank y'all.
Thank you very much.
Keep it up.
Thank you. All right, counsel. We'll adjourn the, well, does anybody want to discuss any of those four items anymore? Forward session items? Okay. We're actually getting into the agenda meeting. It's been a month of Sunday since we've done that, hasn't it? We'll just go through this hurriedly, because we have 30-something items on the agenda. Item five, final adoption, an ordinance to amend the ordinance to alter the schedule of fees for construction. Would that be you, Wayne? Where's Wayne?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Wayne, if, you want to come up here for a minute? Just be on standby. I'd ask if you have a specific question for Wayne on one of these that you want to ask now, can't wait for the meeting, just ask him. And then, if you have something that you think's relevant to some of these, and you just want to throw out a little...
Now, they're run the mill. Yeah, I think they're all pretty standard run-of-the-mill. Nothing out of the ordinary on those.
Okay, the gas, jointly on the gas line, third extension of the agreement. Would that be, Marcus, are you filling in for Tuck tonight?
I am.
Okay, would that be you to discuss that? I know we can't discuss that a whole lot, but... Number six, third extension of the tolling agreement?
I think it's just standard exactly, but we have four. I don't know the details and why.
Okay.
We're not going in, we're having...
Okay.
The status of it, I don't know anything. I believe it's just standard.
I still in negotiations over that, and so they're just going to extend the time? Okay. Okay, item seven, would that be you accepting streets right away, or would that be Wayne, or would that be you or Eric?
That'd be me. The first one was Eric's. The question was, was it Eric's? I got it mixed up. The building from...
The building from fees.
Well, I handled that.
Yeah, number five. Okay, and then, Wayne, that'll be you, seven, eight, and nine, if need be?
Yes, sir.
Those are all kind of standard council members, as you probably are aware of. Item 10, terminating the contract for online utility payments.
That's where we have a credit card processing provider. And in the final implementation of utility billing, we were wishing to change credit card processing providers. We can only do it at a specified time in that contract.
Okay, we're getting a better deal? We're going to hope to get one?
Getting a better deal out of the new processor. In fact, when we started, this processor could not handle our new system. There is also a related item. Anyway, there's a related item where we have to, it's number 24. We have to continue with that provider until April 1st, 2018. And that's what that is for now. And they are charging us to be able to implement our new utility billing system, because they will not waive that charge.
Did Ted look at this correct? Okay. I think it was going to cost like $80,000 or something?
Well, we're locked into a contract we can't get out of until April 1st, 2018. We either implement it, or we don't have any credit card process. Or to get out of the contract, we can buy them out of the contract. It would be $8,000.
Right. And we can't, it has to be all credit card payments, or can we do some of them with them?
No.
Okay.
It's an exclusive.
Okay.
Item number 11, rejecting all bids for the pool building facade. Who would speak to that? Richard? Richard, do you want to come up here and give us a quick tutorial on that?
We had one contractor respond, I think the bid was in the $180,000 range. But when you start looking at what we'll have when they finish is not much different than what we have now, and we're trying to create some ventilation features, and we're trying to do some things with the framing that'll hopefully last longer than the 11 or 12 years what we have now has lasted. So, I think the best thing to do at this point is to reject that bid. And I've touched base with the metal building manufacturer about different options for framing that system and bringing the soffit or the eve in toward the building and allowing some of the roof system to be bended at the purling level.
So, is that, I know that you have some kind of wiggle room if you select someone that's outside the amount of wiggle room we have, and I'm just, and I'm not ignoring the fact it's only one, but let's say you thought it was a great price, but you could negotiate a little bit of that. Is that...
We could do that with the response. I'm sorry. But it depends on how much you change the scope of the work, and I'm not sure that we're not changing it to the point that we could have other qualified bidders bid. But the main thing is, I think we want to make sure what we do is something that's more long-term, I think, than what we would expect. The way the building is set up, there's really no dehumidification in there. It's just, the kind of the heat and humidity rise to the top, and there's no real ventilation except for some fans that blow out, and, but the rest of the heat and humidity stay around the ceiling level, which allows it just to be dead air inside that soffit. And if you look at it, the, all the screws and the connections are rusted all to heck, and, I mean, has anybody seen that? I mean, that's...
Yeah.
Not only is it very heavy, but it's also very deteriorated, so I think we need to do something a little bit different.
All right. Thank you, Richard. Number 12, council approves the selection of Neil Schaefer performing the design engineering for the sidewalks between US 98, County Road 13. Who would speak to that if necessary? Selection of Mott McDonald for the MPO downtown traffic pedestrian safety and wayfinding sign, is that be you, Richard?
I'm sure he is.
Is she here?
She's on vacation. It was for the grant.
14, HVAC unit for the roof of the civic center. That be you? Is that the unit that's been in the budget for a couple of years now? Do you know? You may not know about the past budget. Deborah, do you know? I don't see a, I don't see a green sheet in here. Pardon? Anybody else have a question about that, if I'm the only one?
You talking about the one we just talked about at the Thursday night's work session?
No, I think that was being put in next year's budget, but it may be, but it was, it was in a couple of budgets, though.
Yeah, that's...
But I don't see it in here as being...
There's not a green sheet in here. It means that they're just asking to approve the engineer of record and...
Oh, engineering services, okay. Let me read that again, then. So, that really would be for the engineering services to replace the HVAC? Okay.
I was starting to wonder why Goodwood Mills and Kaywood was replacing the air conditioning.
It's just to have some money.
Because it's over $20,000.
The last time, Robert, the last time someone had to get up on this roof and replace a unit, it required an engineering service, because they had the structure supports to place the AC unit, because the roof is strained.
No, I understand that. The way I was reading it was Goodwood Mills and Kaywood was actually replacing the unit. That was why I was confused. So, it really, that resolution should, and it may actually, the actual resolution may be more proper. No, it says to replace the HVAC unit. Should be to engineer the replacement of the HVAC unit, shouldn't it? 15, keep consulting services to upgrade the city's utilities, GIS with online mapping. I think that's a budget item, isn't it? We'll talk about that. No, it says not budgeted. But we know, we've had a discussion of this. Who can speak to that?
I can, and Jeff can also. I think Jeff had some money in his budget last year for a server, and this will take the place of the need for that server, I believe. But Jeff can speak, Jeff and I both can speak to that.
All right, go ahead, if you want to give us a...
Yeah, this is the online mapping service, where currently, if you're looking for zoning maps or anything for the city, there's only static... maps or anything for the city, there's only static maps. You have to come in the office and get. This will make these available, kind of like the revenue commissioner's website. If you're familiar with the revenue commissioner's website, you can look up tax parcel information. Keat Consulting also serves that service as well. And so it'll be very similar to that. You'll better look up your zoning, the jurisdictions, permitting jurisdictions, planning jurisdictions on the public side. And there's also city side, backside to it, to where there would be a utility function as well. And Jeff can speak to that more than I can about the current function for that. But even, we put out maps for garbage collection, things like that. This could all be done through this map viewer. So it'll be available 24/7 to the citizens.
Twenty-five, nine, the first year, fourteen, four, the next, the following two years?
Yeah, that's correct.
How much, how complete would the mapping be at that time? I mean, I guess there's no end to what you can map, but.
No, it's just going to be an ongoing thing. We'll find more and more things to put up there. We'll start off with the planning department. Then we can add garbage schedules, recycle schedules, anything that we want to share with the public, mapping wise, we'll be able to use this service to display.
Does this go on then year after year after year?
Yeah. It's just a service that we're going to use.
How much, I mean, what's the annual cost, you know?
It's going to be roughly around fourteen after the, after the first year.
That's a first three, it's still be fourteen a year.
And our hope is, as far as the, right now, we get a lot of phone calls, a lot of walk-ins, what's my zone and those kind of things. We're hoping that as we go further down the road with this, the public will engage us more. So it'll be less phone calls. They can look at it 24/7 at their leisure, which also frees up more time for the staff to do other things as well as we continue to grow and so forth, so. I think it's fairly common. I believe a lot of municipalities in the county have a service, this or a similar service like this.
We are at a great deficit in the GIS department right now, so we gotta, a lot of catching up.
Would be, I guess would be, as we said earlier, this will take, they take the place of a need for a GIS server.
Right. Originally in the budget, what I had budgeted in was a actual server that we'll keep here on site. The problem is nobody knows how to implement it. We don't have the GIS, I guess, knowledge base to install a web server to host these GIS maps. And really, the ongoing maintenance and cost of a server is about equal to what we'd be paying for a, for a service, trying to keep all the storage, the bandwidth, backups, everything else. They're just kind of doing everything for us.
And that server was in the 2016 budget or it was in the 2017?
This year's budget.
It's in this year's budget.
Yes, sir.
Okay, so it's kind of a replacing a budgeted item. Do you know what, you know what you had budgeted for that?
I can't recall.
Was it more than twenty-five, nine?
Jill, have been under capital purchases in the general fund, I believe, GIS mapping server was your budget. Also, this will be used with our Munis software as well. I have an employee, Steve C. He's been going around mapping pretty much all the utilities, gas, water meters. And this will allow, let's say, a, like an employee from the water department, if there was a leak, he needs to know where the meter is. Since Steve's magical.
He pulls a number up and tells him exactly where it is.
Pull it up on his computer and see the exact location of the meter.
And also, this would be a web-based service. So if you had a tablet and you're in a field, you could utilize that data as well, anywhere, anytime.
So he would just basically look up the address, hit the map button, and it'll show right where the meter is, far where the service is.
Item sixteen, the contract with International Code Council for an own call professional consulting service for construction planner use. Eric, we talked about this. I thought we had already approved this.
It's just, it's the formal signing of the contract. It was, it was a while back, but yeah, I actually haven't needed this signed.
Was it forty thousand dollars prior?
It was not to exceed for the year, but depending on how the projects come in, I may ask to extend it. But I collect all of the planner view fees from the asset, so.
But I would just say in the past, you collected them also and they stay in-house. Now we're collecting them and they go back out, so.
That's correct. That's correct. But it's, it's also a matter of, I think, you know, we discussed earlier.
Personnel.
Large scale projects coming in that are being drawn, so.
Right. Okay. Thank you, Eric. Item seventeen is the award of the bid for the painting of the roof at the fire station. Seventeen, five forty-one. Somebody going to tell me if that's on par?
Yep.
Right on par. Amazing how that happens, isn't it? Eighteen is the award of the bid for the dash mounted radar systems to emergency lighting and the safety supply for the other items. Has somebody flipped back there? Getting an answer on that?
That is budgeted, Jack. That number's a little bit misleading because, you know, we budget the whole purchase of those vehicles and they're, it comes, the cost comes in parts. So this is just part of the cost.
All right. So it's not really thirty-five thousand under budget?
No, there's more cost.
Okay. But it's budgeted.
It is budgeted.
All right. Number nineteen is the award of the printing of the calendar to Caligas Photo. I'm sorry, I have something. Yeah, I have, have a request. I have a request to put on the agenda. Recommendation now from staff is to reject all the bids.
And do it on the next council? Because it was, they used it monthly. Well, you can probably, but it was, they quoted monthly instead of bi-monthly. So basically, what happened is that the requests for bids went out looking for two thousand copies on a monthly calendar. While they were bidding and sending them in, we changed it to a bi-monthly with five thousand, which would change their bids drastically. So what we're going to do is put off producing the calendar until October. We'll come out with an October, November calendar and start at that point and go out for bids based on bi-monthly five thousand copies.
Is there a price break here? Five thousand? Why not four thousand bi-monthly?
I don't know personally. I understand that there is a, there is a price break at that point. And it should be less expensive than what we've got going now.
All right. So, council. Make sure I have that. Well, we can just remove item nineteen and replace it. This will be new item nineteen. So I'll ask to amend the agenda. Thank you. That'll be a new item nineteen if you'd like to place that on there. And then this item.
I should add that by doing a bi-monthly, what we're doing is giving the citizens more information, access information, so they see what's coming up for the next month and plan. So it's going to be a better operation all the way around.
Okay. But we'll get a chance. We'll see the bids when they come back in for the new one. Okay, item twenty is the purchase of a one-way phase over phase type G. It's a mouthful. Forty-six kilovolt gang switch for the electric department. Sure, this is just.
Budgeted, or is it?
Very good. Item twenty-one is the purchase of the 2018 Freightliner M2 106 chassis set. Relate to budget. Somebody can look at those while I'm trying to do them all over budget, but probably budgeted a twenty-seven to get to twenty-eighteen, so. Anybody have a problem with that, it being a little bit over budget? Somebody? Okay. Item twenty-two, the purchase of a 2018 Freightliner 122 SC chassis, forward axle, eighteen wheeler truck for the public works department. Probably on budget there. Budget was one thirty, what is it? Ten under. I'm assuming we're okay with that? Oh, yeah. Okay. Item twenty-three is resolution to purchase firefighting gear for the fire department. Cost of ten nine oh seven. It's under budget before.
It was budgeted at fifteen thousand.
Thank you. Item twenty-four is the purchase of the interface of the payment processing system. Okay, so this was back to what you had mentioned earlier, Debra? That we have to stick with this until 2018? Okay. Item twenty-five, I know a lot of people have an interest in this, resolution to purchase SCADA system sensors for the water department, fourteen, nine, twenty-two. Who's going to speak to this? Richard or Dan or? Would you come forward? And you just put it in the SCADA upgrade budget, right?
Yes, those sensors are actually current transformers. They're current sensors to monitor the incoming current. What those sensors are actually doing is we can actually tell if a motor is starting to go out by the way that, by monitoring the amp loads that motors are seeing. As amp load's starting to increase, we can tell if it's going to have a premature failure.
So we'll be able to have that capability on those, on our lift stations to monitor that with these current transformers.
So does this, is this related at all to the recent sewage spill?
In the case of where this other one failed, no, this would not have, not have prevented that.
This would have been done irregardless?
Correct.
Just, just coincidental?
That's correct.
Okay. Well, Dan, I'll put you on the spot again while we're here. What, I know that you've, you've told me what your plan is to replace the circuitry that have the fuses to some circuits in the lift stations that don't have those fuses that failed to communicate when we had a failure. Would you tell the council what's, what's being done to correct the situation?
Currently, we have corrected the one that was, came from the factory that way. And we're going through all the other lift stations looking for the same type of design that it has a step-down transformer. Then that step-down transformer steps down four eighty, four eighty, two seventy-seven, two hundred and ten volt that controls, all this was fused, not a breaker. Our electricians are telling us this not, shouldn't have been designed that way. It's a high probability of failure. So now we're taking those out and the parts came in this afternoon around one thirty. We picked up two. We have another lift station that we're currently going to change those out in the morning. And we're going to go to every lift station looking for the same design flaw to change them out.
How many do we have with that design flaw?
I don't know that just yet. We're working on that as, we got one other one.
It takes a while.
So it takes a while to go through each one because it takes two people to do this, one to work on it and another one to stand by to make sure that no other lift stations try to pump to it while they got it down. Because it takes about ten or fifteen minutes to change them out.
And I asked the question, I don't recall what the answer was, but is there a way to program the SCADA system so that if you're not getting pinged and all clear or everything's okay and you just lose your signal? In this case, it failed to communicate, so it didn't send a warning. Is there a way to program the software to send us and all is okay? And if you're not getting that ping every whatever interval of time, call it five minutes, fifteen minutes, that it would send a warning that, well, you might better check on it because we're not getting an all okay.
If I understand the way Jeremy, our Morgan and our electrician was going to set it up is if it loses communication period, it's going to report that.
That's what I'm saying.
Internally.
If it loses period, we get a warning.
That's correct. We'll get something.
Currently, it's not set up.
It was not, it wasn't set up that way. He's working on trying to get that done so we can say the IT department gets it because it loses communication. My understanding is they can dial, they can get into the system if it can't be reset through getting into the system, wherever Jeff gets into it. Then somebody's physically got to go to that site and figure out why is it not communicating? Because it communicates by cellular is how it communicates.
Okay. Thank you, Dan. I didn't mean to put you on the spot.
No, no, that's fine.
I think people want to know those answers.
No, that's fine.
Okay. Item twenty-six, a resolution, council authorizes Jake Robinson on behalf of the council to request and obtain from Eliza Technologies documents and information regarding the IT contract. I can cover that. Personnel board appointment is twenty-seven. Twenty-eight, twenty-nine, thirty, thirty-one, and thirty-two are just approving liquor licenses and some nonprofit events, use of the streets, and that's it. We'll take a five-minute break and then convene the meeting.